Yeah.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
What's on one minute? Welcome to the time of call, the zoning board made you have a motion accepting minutes from last month, so.
Yes, but add my name to your topics.
So first on the agenda would be super. So is there a motion?
Good evening, everyone. Avi Weinberg, Weinberg Lim Engineering here on behalf of the applicants. We have a Basher from the Yeshiva. Here with us as well. Yeshiva has been here at least in five minutes if you mind. A long time, they've been a good neighbors. Very integral part of the community. They have a desperate need for additional adult student housing. The Yeshiva obviously has a, you know, much larger property. We're focusing on a smaller lot here. On, you know, section thirty-nine dash one dash twenty-six. Which is this lot over here for the tax maps and include harness road. We're proposing. Two, we're proposing eight units, two roads and four townhomes. We were actually in front of the planning board, we had a workshop, not in front of the planning board, we had a workshop with them, they filled the plan, we invented a lot of grading drainage. They were very happy with what they saw. One thing they pointed out that this does need a density variance. But they're officially allowed fourteen units per acre. And because there's already eight existing units on this lot. We are now proposing another eight, that would bring the total of sixteen. When we're only allowed fourteen. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but it's approximately fifteen and ten, you know. Between ten and fifteen percent increase. So, this is gonna be owned by the Yeshiva, used by the Yeshiva for adult students. There's already existing adult student housing on the site. This is very consistent with the neighborhood. With the character of what they're trying to do, and we seek this density variance. So they could build more. This, just as a kind of threshold question, I know on the workshop. There was a discussion possibly about the lot coverage, you mean it to be?
Yes.
Is that second variant? No, it's not. So we ended up taking a look, and it turns out, and I specifically wrote it here. For section three-ten dash seventeen, three dash B, I actually wanted to run it by them, I found, we found it afterwards, we were reviewing the code. It turns out for the townhomes, you're allowed thirty percent. Initially, at that meeting, we all thought ten percent, yes. But it turns out you're up to thirty percent, so we do not need a variance there.
Okay, great.
I should point out, there just does happen to be two existing non-conformities. That just the way the lot is, obviously required for townhomes are ten acres, this lot is only four point seven. The side setback required is fifty, this existing home. Is at forty-seven, so those are existing non-conforming features. We're just here for the density.
And so what is the current density?
The current density is we're allowed fourteen for the calculations, we're at eight, so a little over fifty, you know, percent of the allowed use. And we want to take it from instead of fourteen to sixty.
There'll be sixteen total?
Yes, sixteen total. Eight existing units and eight proposed units.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, and the reason is that for townhouses in this district, you can have blocks of seven, so that's why it's fourteen. So that's basically to give it a better. Outline, just the way the, the buildings lay, would be having an additional one for each of those, so that's. Basically the purpose, so otherwise it would be seven per block of townhomes.
Okay, anything else? I have no questions according to the board. So I'll open the public portion, anybody here from the public would like to speak? You want to step up, state your name for the record, let us know. What you have to say. If not, I'm closing the public. No?
Okay.
David Mannings.
I believe those were arranged through the office, I think, or those were done, I don't have them here. Find out.
I just need to verify, those weren't dropped off, of course.
Did you send out, Mannings?
Most of the properties are owned through the Yeshiva, so I don't know.
You have neighbors, what is it, three hundred feet?
Three hundred feet.
Do you have any neighbors?
This is all the Yeshiva, it's the high school.
So.
Well, there is a couple people on Brickman Road down.
Were there not three hundred feet?
There definitely wasn't three hundred feet on the Yeshiva.
Well, we have to have those mailings, so those people would be able to come in and. Have a chance to tell us, maybe, maybe they won't tell us, but they need to know what's going on.
So hold open the public hearing, this meeting.
Well, have to hold off on everything.
Yeah, no decision, hold off on the public hearing.
Unless you can get those mailings, uh, you sort of, I mean, not to be certified, do they have to certify?
Certified mail.
That's good. Get the post office check every morning. So, okay, so then. Would you like to come back in thirty days?
Definitely, someone from here will be here.
I get you.
Yes, I don't know if it will be needed presented, I think the board understands if not.
You know, straight home.
Is it possible, meaning that this is a very, very minute request for variance? To get something done tonight pending the public hearing?
Not re, well, Jordan, you can't, because you have no, you have no neighbors.
They have no public, they can either come and support you or be against you.
They want.
But it goes for a public meeting, and there's, you didn't put, there's no mailings.
Yeah, and that's a, a state procedure, so if it's not followed, it could give someone grounds to sue and challenge on that. So just for you, your benefit, we want to make sure everything's still in, and who like that.
I agree, it's, there is. I have no problem with the variance, I'm just letting you know that. I don't have anybody else.
No, I have no problem with that.
So, I don't think it's a problem with you not knowing that you're gonna, most likely, I can't guarantee anything, I have no problem with it. Uh, he has no problem, he's the biggest problem on the board.
In terms of the procedure. Can we still go ahead to the planning board and open that, I mean, is there may not be able to close it, to at least go to the planning board? Yeah, I think you can still get on the agenda, just, you know, let them know you're gonna be back the next week with the zoning board, and at least introduce the project, then. I don't see an issue with that. Right, so. I appreciate that, I guess that was a clerical error on our end.
I'm glad, Jordan, see, you should be the boss over there.
So we'll, uh, resolve this, but I, I appreciate. Appreciate your feedback, Steve.
Thank you.
Again, just before we do the.
Sorry, the construction though, as far as what you have planned, is, is all the setbacks and stuff are fine?
Yeah, we need everything else, we specifically set this up that it's. All the things that backs. They just need eight houses, and that would just bring us over the density threshold, but we specifically laid this out. Okay, so we'll go to the planning board, introduce the project to them. And then we'll make sure to get the mailings in order, um, just write this down. When is the next submission date? And.
Thursday, Thursday of next month.
Now.
For, oh, for us?
Yeah, for you guys, yeah.
What is, yeah, that has to be, when did they have to put that in?
Uh, mail-in took me, what, ten, ten days?
I don't know, some people.
That they're available in ten days.
Yeah, I think that'd be mailing.
At the minimum, I think, ten days. Prior. Oh, and so I mean, you mail them out tomorrow.
Yeah, I think it's ten days, I recognize. Eric, oh, Stevenson?
I said, he's gotta leave early anyway, so I don't know if they want to wait.
Wait for what?
You said, well, for, there's all the applicants here.
So we're out of here.
It's the middle of our turn.
We'll have to take a.
Vote, yeah.
I mean, you can, we have. Yeah, no, I understand.
I'm trying to get rid of you.
I asked him if they tell the applicants at the new time, and he says, yes. So, out of respect for us, they should show up on time, I got you.
I think Joel has a couple, I could shoot him a text and say.
Shoot him a text. Found the plan on his agenda, falls, but changed.
But, uh. It's a public meeting still, or we closed?
Still a public meeting, we're waiting for some applicants. Not sure, I don't think anybody's coming, but we did change the time two months ago. We. Three months ago? Okay.
It's clearly stated the time they have to be here, but.
Everyone has been told, so.
You want to do it all?
Eli was gonna bring blisters and.
It's cooking, we'll get it.
And if, and I know if you were to ask. Rabbi, you would.
I was blessed then.
And they have the best glances, I've been there.
Yeah, so if we could just, we get into next submission for this, I just want to make sure we're all. The submission, or do we need to resubmit this, it's just open? We don't need someone on the next meeting, we.
We just. Well, twelve eighteen is the next meeting.
Twelve eighteen.
We've just gotta send out the legal notice. Uh, mail out the legal notice certified to.
That week, is it something that they?
Did you guys receive this?
They want?
I'm not asking. Yeah.
You are able to mail that in.
And he.
Um, let me know before.
How would you?
Let me just make a phone call.
Alright, so Joel said he didn't know and he'll be here in ten minutes.
Ah, he didn't know, okay.
I mean, I, I didn't know either, I, I walked in, I was like, what is going on, man?
Oh, you haven't been.
I've been away a couple months, yeah.
I was, the prison treated you well.
I was, it was, uh, normal, so it was, it was nice.
Where'd you go?
No, I. Squatching grains. Yeah, we finally bottled our, our ice batch this past weekend, as we, uh. Our pizza raw had too many tins in it, and so we had to put it like in acid, and basically it breaks them out. It's crazy for like a whole barrel, we put it in one, one plate, and somehow we split up the cans around the whole. So we re-racked it. In the middle of the week, and now we're able to, like, you know, get it all bottled, so. We do eight barrels. Would have been already tasted totally. So, we got like sixteen, sixteen bottles. So everyone gets like a ten barrels out, and then we're, you know, so it's always, I don't drink, I start to give it away.
I might, I might.
If you think about it, actually, I have a few bottles in my trunk, so I. We're going now, nowhere. Yeah, right.
I got that, um. So you start with this.
You're probably the world's great boy. We get that. Yeah, because we were working only. They don't make us that long, so. I would.
I'll say, good for them. And they don't work late.
But still, it's, well, it is, you can basically do like a table red, so.
Turn around, it's like, just turn around.
And. Good, it's, good enough. Yeah, it can definitely be better. Nice work.
The eight minutes?
Joel, Joel.
Which one is?
I think he's doing, uh, Yakar Markowitz. I believe he might be doing Bell, and yeah, I believe he's doing Bells.
The camp bells.
There's two different.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark, Markowitz and Bells.
So.
What's Bells?
Bells is in Woodridge.
Oh, okay, go back number two only.
Uh, number one.
One and two, Bells is number one.
What are they, arguing together? You'll, so you make a payroll next time, see, you can guarantee a payroll next time.
Turn counter.
Make them a counter.
I just, there's to be fair.
You told him he should print platters.
He would. He's good.
What about the jelly donuts?
I hate you. Don't come without donuts.
Vanilla shakes? They were talking about the vanilla shakes the other day. I already said there's a, a place in the city we're gonna go. I walk in this silver shop and, and, and.
Why, you want to buy a fifteen thousand dollar.
Fifteen thousand, exactly, right. So I said, let's go, maybe you went to a wedding, and I said, maybe you'll buy a gift, it was, they got silver in the order.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
I showed the thing, I have, oh, let's get out.
How did you buy it?
By none.
As far as the silver.
Greenfield, yes. You know, the reason. Yeah, I know, so we want to increase the future. Yeah. Like, uh, so firemen. It's a promise. Uh, they did in September.
Which is one of the.
What a beautiful wedding.
They're working one day, one half day, we're just hanging out with grandkids.
Always cold.
Cold, you're outside.
Nah, you had some sort of.
I am eager, my dad's gonna have a good. Trying later, I have. A lot of doctors.
Pretty sure.
Just spend. Eighty more than two weeks back, just have a house rent now all the time, the last two days.
Ask you.
It's not like him, you know that, so.
I give you some, I feel.
Yeah, so.
It's nice to, to wait for you to work.
Just like, whatever's going on.
What the end part.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't. We would become, we, we had left, doesn't it?
Uh, after I know, he left, he did his four years, yeah. I think about a month.
Maybe should have looked at it too.
Like, I told you.
All right, so the one.
I just saw that. That's right down, you saw the way down there, how many says two months? Bomb, but you get, get some sheets on the wall.
But to read. Because with the use variance, I thought they were.
Oh.
You know, this, that, we. Still asking Ali's name. Those are where you can try.
That's hard.
When you come here, I saw. Yeah, we're gonna make.
Yeah, and like to come back.
You're gonna change. I don't know, it's only, I. I was forced. In other words, they said step forward, and everybody looked backwards. Run. But then I like. But you could have said no.
They like, take the wall down?
The other dude didn't want to do it, they're late. And you were on the board, you were board that already.
But it's one.
One doorway. I might put everything in the chaos.
Left doors to the outside, we just opened it up, that's one, one family.
Right, she didn't want to think it.
It's happening, uh.
Many binders there. She's, she's not really there, she was supposed to be there. She, she couldn't recall, they have to tell her. The surgeon, oh, but, so that's the problem, that's why that's. Yeah, they still. Joel, that, that, that he would always be there. She's in the nurse, you know, so.
Let's say this. If some of them are following.
I was.
We landed a year.
They woke up on your phone. Listen, don't say you weren't supposed to be.
Families got bigger and they said.
If I break with you, I share my. Be the mayor. Didn't happen, it didn't happen by mistake, nothing is by having. Everything is supposed to be, so I think.
And I've got to stop that kind of enemy, like, does not pay it, you know, like, CEO, take a look at him.
When someone gets here, I call.
What's the head? Thing. I can send it on.
Okay, okay. Well, I mean, you know, I mean, one. Okay, you have any chance of your.
Where you're mayor, huh? Really here.
They kept it open.
Can you hide it, you're somewhere over there? Set the.
That's it.
And see, you were, they move, but for all time, and see, actually, we're all.
So you did really, theoretically, it's been a whole week.
Yo, whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Sorry, I didn't know that, uh.
How do you know?
I do have another issue, that.
Your issue?
That's a legal issue.
Oh, well.
We got any of that down, it's under, under notice, I don't. I mean, because either, I guess, yeah, we'll find it.
Say that again. On the notice. Hello, why, you were notified that office that, that, that time, okay, we wanna just, wanna check if the office does that job.
Yeah, so let's, uh. I guess, I mean, I guess by the time we end the meeting, we might close it, and we'll see if anyone else comes. Okay.
Jordan. I've been being old, the time.
The girl with the in front, they're supposed to be telling the girl.
Well, I guess they're not.
I can't speak for them, these kind of people.
But you could speak to them when, tomorrow morning, when you go into work.
And they, they know, they know the time.
Which one are you going with, Joel?
My name's, uh.
Which one now?
Travis first, I think it's.
Besser Markowitz.
Markowitz. You got your mailing notices for that, or something?
It's got nothing to do with the voting, that's not gonna be in, by its next law. Uh, with the Ford Foundation, we're not talking about that. But don't even think.
We can talk, we can talk about that too.
No, not talking. Folks. Folks. We're not, we put it on the record.
Well, we're not supposed to. Put on the record, we're not talking. I'll get you my little backpack going to my chairs.
I'm pretty busy, you know, the reasons. Listen, I guess, you know, what they don't do. Other portion of it is the same thing, they don't do to get a lock. That issue was very high. So, listen, if you would want for supervisor, these things will change, that's for sure, they would. That's something we do. Why didn't you, Rob? Because I couldn't get two votes.
He's got a point there, you know.
Next time you rise for mayor, you fight me. Please, let us know who you are, and what you want to do.
Joel, I want to present, uh, units number twenty-four and twenty-five from Riverside Associates. Um, they're here for a lot coverage variance to add. An addition to unit twenty-four and twenty-five. So there's an existing blue legs development. Route forty-two and Gable, this happened in front of the planning board and zoning board in two thousand and nineteen, they received plan with approval. For a number of buildings and for master plan as well. Uh, the total lot coverage that they received back then from the ZVA was thirty-one percent. With this proposed addition, it goes to thirty-one point one seven percent. So our, so we're seeing the variance for that additional point one seven percent.
I'll just give you one suggestion, have these applicants know with their buildings. Because I had to do some research to find out, there was no number on those buildings. I always want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
So many of us, Joel. Go and look at the sites before you show up here. And gates are locked. No numbers on building. And it takes away the opportunity to look at the project.
Um, you're absolutely correct, buildings should be numbered, I mean, gates are locked, I mean, that's. You know, we can arrange a visit.
That gate, your project right now was not locked, that gate was open.
Right, that was open.
That was open.
So, but buildings should be numbered, it's actually required to be numbered, so I mean, I'll, I'll make sure to relay that message.
There weren't numbers on that. We're only for old twenty-five.
And I think the code enforcement office should tell these applicants. That what, that we want to visit, and then we should have access. Could you relay that message?
Sure.
Great.
Or we're gonna ask to possibly give us the code to get in.
Not this one. You can ask, but most applicants who have locked communities.
Yeah.
Especially if it's in the winter time, they typically, they don't want, just give out the code, but.
But I'm not gonna vote on something I can't see.
Sure, no, I, I also, that's what I'm saying, we, maybe we can arrange some, somehow, it either day. When you guys can go out.
Yeah, but we can't go out together.
Correct, correct, but just a full day that it's unlocked for the day. Uh, I don't know.
It's not gonna work.
But did you front to Thursday daily from eight to five, or?
No, I mean, I don't know.
Right, right.
We all have our own. This guy is the mayor. We have to do it on our own individual schedule. He's a busy guy, the mayor, he can, he's got a lot of things to do. You know, people work, I don't, people work, I don't work, I.
We'll try to work, we'll try to work something out.
Okay. So let's stick, let's focus on this.
Yes. So again, as I said.
It's a minute ask, it's.
It's point one seven percent, which that we are asking for, yes.
Very good, so. Will, will, uh, anybody have any questions for this nice young man? No, I'm waiting to approve. Okay. Wow, you don't even want to go through the measure, you see that? Okay, so, uh, we'll open the public. Is there anybody here from the public would like to speak on this matter? Anybody on, is Marvin? Is Marvin on the Zoom there? Somebody want to speak, do you have to raise their hand? I don't know, I forget when it comes out. Marvin's been up there now.
Marvin's not responding, so.
Nobody? Okay, you have the man, right? Have the mailings? Good, you asked that question, well, I have to help you, you do, I need all the help I can. So, um, alright, so we'll close the public portion. Board comments. I made mine.
Well, it's twenty-four hundred worth, I think, or two.
And that increases it?
Yeah.
The increase is to twenty-four hundred.
Right.
So it increases to twenty.
I'm saying.
It's point one seven percent.
Just on one.
Is increasing.
On this one side, right?
Yes, the front, towards the front.
Anybody have, you, you, what, you have any things, comments on this one? Do we have to go through the board projects? Yeah, we do. What do we have now? Alright, any violations on this property?
Not here.
Not yet. That's very true, then. Okay. Run from twenty twenty-one? Were you here then? No, okay, you're off the road.
And, and the sentence is to the front, right, so is it, is it currently not, doesn't have the setbacks?
So, towards the front, I mean, towards the front of the unit, we call it sometimes the Jewish front. It's really not the front of the road, it's the front to the inside of the circle.
Yeah, oh, right, yeah, but that's.
So it's away, it's away from below.
Correct, but, so then, this is where the property is.
Yes.
And so is this already less than?
So this, this is the setback line, this is the setback line. Um, sure, yes.
So why is it saying on?
So Steve. There is two violations.
There is.
Twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, which is a question of that building without.
Yeah. What, so what we.
Building without, you built the deck without. On the side units that we're talking about.
I don't even talk about that. So there are violations, building.
This, this is, they, I don't know if they got a violation on this, but I brought, I was brought in after the status inspection of this, and this is why we're here today too, to address that.
Okay, we're here to give you a.
Variance for.
Variance for what you already did. That was correct, so what do we have to do to clear up these violations?
I don't see that building permit was filed for either twenty-four or twenty-five.
A building. A building permit application on the lease plans was, were filed, and they got it in denial because of the lot coverage.
So once you get the lot coverage, you then can clear.
Then we can, then we can clear the violation with receiving the building permit. And doing the inspections as required.
Okay, so they're in conjunction with each other. So you get the variance, then you can clear up the violation.
I just want.
Okay. Okay, so I'll read the questions, I'll start with. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood detriment to nearby properties.
No.
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 No. I also say no. Can the benefit sought be achieved by the applicant? It be be, I'm sorry. Can the benefit sought be achieved by the applicant? Be achieved by another method other than the area of areas?
No.
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 No. I also agree, no. Whether the request. The requested area variance is substantial.
No.
No. Nothing.
Maybe. No.
Really?
No. Yes.
Did you shake them hands?
No.
Okay. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, impact on the physical or environmental condition. In the neighborhood or the district. Please.
No.
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 No. They say no as well. Was the alleged difficulty self-created? Which shall be relevant, but not necessarily. Include granting the variance. This is always a tricky one, you know? Cause if he never came here. I don't wanna leave. Not leaving. So I'll read it again.
Sure.
Was the alleged difficulty, so the problem that he has, which why he is coming here. Was it self-created, in the applicant create this issue, or was it just blessed upon him by a great of hour? I'm trying to make it easy for you. It's always self-created. Trying to make it. I'm just, I'm I'm trying to make it so that. It's very simple. So like, God created, or did the applicant create?
Yeah, we could look at it.
I think created.
So it is self-created, so the answer is yes.
Yes.
That's.
I'm glad you think of English.
I'm glad I came up with that, cause I get some weird answers with that one.
You probably.
You got it, really, okay, so, uh. Uh, we'll go with the lead agency.
Um, um, yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Uh, negative deck?
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion to approve? So move. Okay, you want me sharing? Steve? Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes? And then say yes. Okay.
Thank you for one, appreciate that.
Thanks.
Next is, uh, ten bells. Joe Conair for Emerald Wells. This is, uh, Eastbound Road, this Eastbound Road is Bayland Road. The property is a hundred eighty two point seven three acres with about hundred eighty point two six acres on the north side of Eastbound Road. And rest of it, two point four seven acres on the. On the south side of Eastbound Road. Uh, we're looking to some divide that two point four seven acres, which is on the south side of Eastbound Road. And make it as a separate land for a single family home. The proposal, the zoning. Is it's reg zoning, which requires three acres. For properties outside of, uh, public water sewer or public sewer. Uh, we only have two point four seven acres. Also, being that it's a long narrow lot. Uh, it would be impossible to build a single family home if we won't have the here to restrict, uh, setback requirements. In the zoning, the setback requirements for front yard is seventy five feet. What we we are proposing forty four feet. For the rear yard, the setback, the required setback is fifty feet, and we are proposing forty five feet and eight inches. Uh, if you look at the other homes on Eastbound Road. Most of them are between, not I wouldn't say most. Uh, for example, the next property is about between forty five and fifty feet from the road. And these properties are all between fifteen to twenty five feet from the road. Uh, the next property on the side of Lake House is forty two feet, and then one afterwards is is between forty five and fifty feet. So it's kind of, it will blend in with the neighborhood, it will not be closer, uh, to the road than the other homes.
Okay. That's Yeshiva.
Mazika.
Yeah, I'm glad you said. Okay. Anybody have any questions on this one? Is it, is this? The the front yard, is that the best you can do? To go from forty four? From seventy five?
Unless we go closer to the rear yard.
You had a little issue with that one, didn't you?
So again, I again, it is aligned with. It is aligned with the other homes.
It's in line with the other homes.
Yes, it's not closer than the other homes.
So if you did that, okay, I'm I'm okay with that, you're right, you want that. I'm answering, he's quiet today, so. I don't know.
I'm here to answer.
He's quiet. It's good, let me. It's quiet when I'm okay with things, when I'm not okay with things, I'm not quiet. Let him be. Like, I'm. Sleep as long as.
Want to know Florida, it's the Navy.
Well, the the building that said three nine three had a channel.
You're any of it.
Is that the?
Oh, very.
So the sausage street. I'm just making sure I.
Sure.
Could where, cause when I drove, where's the?
It says Bayland Road, this is Eastbound Road.
Right, right, so the building that had the address, this address. It's.
Yeah.
Was on this. It's a lot.
It's a lot.
So it wasn't the building, the building?
It wouldn't be. Should look like the rest of the block. Okay. Anybody have any questions, putting up again? We'll open the public, if not. The question, uh, yes, question. All right, no public here. Anybody on, uh, Zoom that would like to raise their hand and question? Anyway, no? No? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Board comments? No? Good, good. George, if you wanna make a comment. You can't vote, but. I I I respect. Try leaving, but. Huh? Will you leave? I respect your opinion on all of a sudden.
Okay.
Okay. That one. I respect it, I may not take it. Okay, so, uh. Any violations, what about the mailings on this one? Steve is sleeping on this.
We got the mailings.
We got the mailings, that mailings. They totally have to vote you once, they have to vote you later.
No violations on this property.
No violations, okay. I'm on this one, you'll leave. Not yet, okay, well. And and nobody has anything to comment on, all right, so we'll run down. The questions, remember how I explained the last one? Very simple, really, it is. It and you you summed it up, it's almost all times, always yes.
This one, since there is this is separate.
Yes.
Just need to do it three times, so everyone's gonna get a lot of practice.
Yeah, I get it, so, um. So first we'll do the, it's three, it's the two point four seven where they need three.
Yeah, yes, and then the, uh, front yard forty four to seventy five, and then rear yard is forty five point eight to fifty. On the agenda, it says seventy five, but it's.
I see, they are. But not on the agenda. Okay.
Right.
It's on.
That's next to it, okay. Yeah, there's there. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, it says seventy five, that's wrong.
Yeah, it should be.
Should be left.
It's on the line.
Yeah, so it's only about four.
What was the rear yard again?
Four point four.
Rear yard was.
From from forty four would be required seventy five.
Where's front?
That's.
No, we are saying.
Where's forty five foot eight?
Forty five and.
To fifty.
Forty five point eight?
Forty five feet, eight inches to fifty feet.
Seventy five should read fifty.
Oh, that's.
Correct, the rear, the rear yard, that's most difficult on the.
And and you wanna go from seventy five to forty four and five?
Correct.
So. We'll do the two point four seven. From three. And and just to let you know that if any one of these fail. They all, right, if one fails?
No.
Well, unless he changes.
Alone.
Unless he changes. You can't, if if we don't allow the front yard. But we allow the the two point four seven from the three. We can't do anything.
It's, yeah, so I mean, you technically could go through each of them in the most technical sense, you are right, though, yeah, correct. Yeah, so if you can't do.
Never hear that, I just wanted to tell you. You should gravitate to be a lawyer, let me tell you, you know something? I wanted to be a lawyer. But the pay wasn't enough, to be honest with you.
And so you went to the.
I went to the post office, that's right. Get more days off. And go to pension. All right, so we'll read all the questions on the first one. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood detriment to nearby properties. I think I'm gonna start with you every time. He's having.
No.
He's having, no, okay.
No.
No.
No. I say no. Can the benefit sought be achieved by the applicant be achieved by another method other than the area variance?
No.
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 No. I say no. Whether the requested area variance is substantial.
No.
No.
Yes.
Yes, I say no. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect, impact on the physical or environmental condition. Conditions in the neighborhood or district. The way you're very. I like it, you started now. I usually have to. Get an answer out of you, but anything?
No.
No, I also say no, was the alleged difficulty self-created? Remember? The applicant do something, or did God make something happen where he needs to have this done?
You say?
Yes, I'm okay. So good. A lot of people, many, a lot of things. Okay, yes, the answers, yes, yes, yes. I'm so good, you know, I. Came up with a good one there, I guess. It's very simple, all right, so the, so you're good on the first one? Do we have to vote? Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second? To approve?
Is that name?
Oh, okay, yeah, no, no, you're right, um.
No, what?
Want to get out of here, lead agency.
I'm motion.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Negative deck? Motion?
Okay.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Do I have a motion? To approve? The 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 two point seven from three.
Motion.
Motion?
Second?
Second? Yes?
Yes.
I'm not sure. Okay. What would you like to be called? David, Billy? I would.
Well, she is fine.
Mayor?
No, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm dealing with an Australian, his name is David, but he wants to be called David.
Because that's the Israeli brand language. David.
So. Let's go in the same order of voting this way, or I have to write three different times.
Fine, let's mix it up.
Infamous Steve first.
Let's mix you up.
All right, so now we're voting on the front yard, seventy five to forty four. Whether the, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood detriment near nearby properties.
No, no.